Alderman Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Here.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Studer?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Uh, let's see, approval of the minutes. Council, you have the April 8th regular city council and also the April 14th special city council meeting.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes. I have one item on page four of the minutes for April 8th. And on page four, you'll notice that rework of the ceilings for service performance, a new police station. You have seven As, one Nay, and one Stain. Could be nine people. I think we've got too many As. I think that would be a six.
Yeah, six, one and one.
Other than that, I didn't find any other corrections.
And I have one. On page two?
Your correction was on April 14th meeting, correct?
April 8th. It's on page, it's on page seven.
Page seven, yeah, it's number four, page seven on the...
Special council meeting?
Yeah, April 8th.
Regular council.
Yes, I understand April 8th regular council meeting.
And mine is on page five, which is page two of the April 8th. And I said, Mayor, I informed the council that Colby recently attended a class, completed all requirements, and is not a certified floodplain. Think that it should be now.
Is it your favor?
That's what I asked.
Did you clarify?
Good catch.
Excellent, thank you, Sherry. Sherry, contact.
You're uncertified.
Sorry, Colby.
Is there a makeup?
What page was that on, too? It's on page five.
Page five, which is the page two.
Two, it's the first paragraph.
So...
Oh, okay, very well, okay, I see that, okay.
All of us, students, you want to make a motion to approve the necessary corrections?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve all minutes with the necessary pointed out corrections that I've been presenting.
Motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any further discussion? I'm going to call this now.
It is now.
No call vote, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Um, I'm gonna pass, okay?
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Seven Yes, one pass, motion passed.
Okay, emergency report, just a couple items. First item is to make everybody aware, there's a tag day, May 16th. The first United men to this church, their overseas mission program, they'll be out there during their tag day. The second thing I want to make mention of is it just came through email today to remind everybody next Wednesday, April 29th, there's city hall at 4:00 p.m., 7:00 p.m. Will County's long range transportation plan will be here. It's an open forum, public meeting, public forum to try to get in, to provide input. And basically the transportation plans, how they are fitted for Will County. One thing that I can make here, unfortunately I'll leave a little bit later, but I'll be here early on, is if everybody can come, make sure that what you guys are presenting to the people is always positive, but also remember that, as I feel that a lot of times, us down here in citizens other in Will County tend to be forgotten about, I want to make sure that we have that response to say, listen, we're just as vital and just as important as Fisher, Bolingbrook, the Lennoxes, and Romeo, Bill, and Will. That we have issues, we look for long range plans and how we're going to meet our needs for transportation and how it moves forward. We all know that we're growing down here, I'd rather, much rather us to be on the forefront and ahead of that, ahead of those transportation issues than continually behind and trying to fix up that problem, so.
What was the other one?
It's from four to seven. They will be presenting flyers, we'll be making sure we get flyers out. As soon as we get the flyers out, we'll get those posted on our Facebook, social media sites. We'll also convey that to the chamber, the members, the businesses, to make sure they're aware of this public forum as well, so they can present their, any ideas that they may have in the Will County long range transportation plan. Any questions about that, too? If you have questions, always, 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 very well versed in transportation, especially in our area, so. Top of floodplain management.
Yes.
No problem, Colby. Put it against it the first go. That's right. So...
Yep. So that's all I have for tonight on an emergency report. Do we have any citizens comments tonight? One other thing before, if we want some citizen comments, just, I became aware, you know, Sherry, I've heard a lot, Sherry's just been qualified to be mental health. Crisis editor mentioned us for our teams within the area, so, which is very, which is great to have, so Sherry.
I hope I'm not needed, but if you know, when kids in crisis...
We always hope you're never needed, if you're not needed. I talked with Sherry real briefly, and we'll try and work with her as far as the coalition and coordination with police department and various agencies, because we all know teams sometime have crises, and it's good to know we have somebody local that can possibly help with their issues.
Twenty-four seven, you know, anybody just call me.
Thanks, Sherry.
Good job, Sherry.
I have issues.
White sex, white sex, we need to help.
Unless it's a Cubs fan, I'm not too, but Phil.
You had to go down there.
You started funny.
All right. All right, so seen those citizens comments, we'll move on to the next one, which is the planning and zoning commission. We do have the recommendations for the Dollar General site plan, and go ahead and do the motion. And I'll just go ahead and do the motion first, and then I'll have the next one.
As recommended by the planning and zoning commission, I move to approve the site plan as submitted for Dollar General, perhaps our Dollar General, with the following stipulations. One, front elevation, wall pack lighting would be changed to reflect the equipment submitted in the cut sheets for lighting equipment. Two, correct the double-headed light fixture in the parking lot to either a single or L-shaped fixture to eliminate spillage onto the state highway.
A motion by Alderman Persick, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. We have the guys at Dollar General here, for any questions you can have. As you guys recognize, in regards to the lighting issues, they were recommendations that were brought forth by the planning and zoning commission, and just the concerns they had looking at their cut sheets, I guess, and stuff like that. Would I take them and have any issues with what was presented, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding, we've actually submitted revised plans. I've got looming counts and whatnot tonight going, that we revised the lighting plans in accordance with the suggestions by P and D. So I expect hand these out if you guys want to see them.
If anybody wants to see them, I mean, I...
I do.
So looming counts.
Changing.
Huh?
Thank you.
Last time I was here, sir, I asked you if you had any luck or hiring local people, did you find some local contractors?
So we have, I took that to heart, we instructed our G C to hire as many local guys as possible. We struck a deal with a local union electrical contractor, we struck a deal with the laborers to apply EFS, and we're gonna use local steel erection, and we'll use as much local work as we possibly can.
That's great, I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm gonna be a few short...
That's okay, you can give Mike to someone else if they want to see it, I just want to look.
If you guys have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I mean, I get planning and zoning was unanimous in their approval, outside of one, you know, their additional recommendations that they had in regards to this.
Think he can take care of his baby for us like you guys here on your...
Yeah, well, that'd be really sweet.
You pay one oh two for it?
If you don't owe one oh two, that'd be really sweet.
They missed a few potholes, I guess.
It looks nice, I think it looks great.
I think, you know, Dollar General company will be a welcome addition to the city. It's a good part of life. My bigger hopes is that this is just a cornerstone to what will become progressively more within the retail environment over there and commercial environment. I'm happy to see you guys come in here, as always, there's questions, there's concerns in any business, but to see somebody like Dollar General or any business interested in coming to the city of Wilmington and picking up your business is very lovely. I'd like for you guys to come.
Thank you, we appreciate it, we feel like with the product we're gonna, we're gonna bring in here, building lines is gonna be a good looking addition to your town. It's got quite a few enhancements to what we build in more rural communities, so we're very happy to be here and appreciate you guys. It's a ninety-one hundred square foot building.
Is this the intended?
That's what it's gonna look like.
I think it looks great.
I don't think anyone ever seen one, right?
Mm-mm, that's, I just told Frank that.
They were very, very open to any ideas to be part of the community, and because of the architectural look of the bank across the way and the gallons enhancements, they rather way took that suggestion back and started coming back with some different facade looks.
You got a hold of them while it wasn't in pretty great face front.
Yeah, one of the concerns they had was that metal lump, you know, and they changed that base to be more of a concrete.
It's one of the nicer ones I've seen.
Yeah.
We've built quite a large number, and this is one of the nicer ones we've, that we'll have ever built. It's gonna be a, I mean, all the visible sides are gonna be either masonry or stucco, so it's gonna be, and it's got the basically two fronts, corner entry. It'll be a nice looking building.
Very good. Any other questions, concerns? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Build away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can go throw a shovel over there right now, all right? They're ready to go.
See you guys.
Thank you. See ya. All right, their next scheduled meeting is Thursday, May 7th at six o'clock p.m. Emergency reports, building grounds, park, health, safety, committee, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to award the bid submitted on April 8th, 2015 by H.L. and Associates Incorporated, the lowest responsible bidder for lawn care and maintenance services to the city's general properties and recreation areas.
A motion by Alderman Van Dyne, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? No call vote.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 13th, 2015 at 6:30 p.m.
Water, sewer, streets, and alleys committee, Alderman Studer, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve S.A.I.C.R. Instruction Incorporated to perform the emergency repair of an eight-inch valve for the water treatment plant in the amount not to exceed $8,865.
A motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? No call vote, please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
The next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, May 13th at 5:30 p.m.
Please, Esther, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 12th, 2015 at 5:30 p.m.
Finance Administration, bid on acquisition, Alderman Studer, Alderman Tudor.
I move to approve the April 21st, 2015 accounts payable report in the amount of $356,623.8 cents, and the March 2015 collector's report in the amount of $309,925.8 cents.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion?
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a contractual agreement between H.L. and Associates Incorporated for lawn care maintenance services beginning May 1st, 2015 and ending March 1st, 2018.
A motion by Alderman Studer, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? No call vote, please.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to move, I move to move item three on the agenda to May, the May 5th meeting.
I think it's coming for a motion, just, we'll just move that.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Next scheduled meeting, Tuesday, May 19th, 2015 at 6:00 p.m.
Orders to license, Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Thank you.
Like, move to approve ordinance number 15-04-21-01, ordinance pending and deleting certain provisions of Chapter 71, licensing provisions, and deleting and it's a priorly Article 2, food deliveries of Chapter 115 of the City of Wilmington court ordinance.
A motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? No call vote.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve ordinance number 15-04-21-0 to an ordinance of ending Chapter 39, purchasing and contracts.
A motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? No call vote, please.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Yep. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 13th, 2015 at six o'clock p.m.
Personnel staff advisory, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick, nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. City engineers report, Mr. Zonias.
All right. Most of these projects have been idle since last month, except for the two IDOT projects that everyone's fully aware of, can't keep a refrigerator there and one of two improvements. As everyone's aware, the temp signals were turned on Friday out there.
Boy, they're in nowhere.
Quite a congestion issue, but everything seems to have settled down quite a bit over the weekend. I mean, we'll see how things move on, but...
About a one-figure C yesterday. In case I was, there were a lot of people left me to handle.
Yeah, we're going back and forth quite a bit, our party's sharing quite a bit.
I want to confirm, there is one sidewalk that will be open, I went over it, it was.
Yes.
Because I seem to be concerned about that. Okay. And I think there's, you guys are still working, I mean, they're monitoring the situation, I think there still might be some changes afoot. I know some people have been concerned in regards to the island exit.
Yeah, now a lot of people have gotten, and they're actually blocking the traffic coming across, so... Yeah, I mean, there's IDOT reps that are supposed to be out there the next few weeks observing everything to make corrections of the timing of the signals and everything else. And we had asked them on Friday to put out more signs to not block the driveways or the side streets.
The intersections would be great, too.
Intersections, too, no, and these order no signs to be put up, they've built, or made new signs, whatever, so they should be out by the, you know, the end of this week, whatever, so...
And I have, just to confirm, because I know we talked about this, there is for the emergency vehicles, and I can't remember the name, the thing that will allow...
It's an object, huh?
Yeah, it will allow for emergency vehicles, so it'll clear the bridge, how's that, how's that work? Everything turns red, they clear the bridge?
Yeah, most, yeah, most sides will turn red, whatever, it'll be a timing deal, you know, with the turn lane through the middle, that's where the emergency vehicles will be able to make their way west to the bridge.
Okay.
So if you're, if you're going westbound, you'll be sitting in your lane, but there'll be that turn lane that's in the middle of the road that would be able to progress and get out there in front of everybody to get across.
Okay. Mike, the T S?
Yeah, a lot of our stuff, there was a talk with the emergency, you know, the chief, especially during peak times, make sure he's got an officer over on that side of town during those peak travel hours, talking with the fire chief, they assessed the situation where if, based on the traffic studies, you know, they knew a lot of sharing, so if issues arose there, they'd actually have Bravewood come, to be able to respond to any type of emergency in that area if there's those type of factors, so, you know, not only we got IDOT reps, but our local guys, our fire guys, these guys are monitoring the situation to see what they would, how they would handle things in certain emergency situations. I think outside of that Friday, it's probably been the worst that I've seen it, the fact back and forth there several times.
Today was nice.
You know, during those peak rush hour times, it's always going to be, but once, once we get to that hour and a half in the morning, that hour and a half in the afternoon, it just quiets right on down, so. My concern is, you know, a lot of the people are afraid to go over on that side of town because businesses always say, hey, wait till about 6:30, you'll be fine, but what happened, stuff like that, so...
Is there any way that they could check, I get a few calls of the school buses off of First Street, because it seems like the light goes so quickly, if they only get a couple buses out at, at one time, and, and they're starting to start to get the thing rolling a little bit earlier than anticipated, and a lot of the kids are, where's the bus at, you know, because they're, they're getting stuck way behind, and is there gonna be a problem down the road for a class?
I'll make some suggestions as far as, you know, staging the buses over by the school and stuff like that, we've made those suggestions. I don't know if they're following through with those, you know...
I mean, I meet with the superintendent tomorrow, so that's when we talk again, so...
The thing I was, is there's only five weeks of school.
Right.
Yeah.
So sometimes, you know, we're, could be a long five weeks. And, you know, everybody recognizes school bus situation in the morning especially, so, you know, maybe they'll, they'll adjust alley stage things, and, you know, sometimes maybe take that extra five minute loop to go around, sometimes is beneficial, too. I've done it myself, one took the loop, I think it took me an extra seven minutes, so...
A lot less frustration.
Thank you.
And you're moving.
But I did bring that the term crisis attention that the rep from IDOT or the project that...
Yeah, because, you know, you're, we're not talking about a little pickup truck or something like that, we're talking about school buses, you know, and it's like three times that, and you're not gonna get that many vehicles over at a, at a corner and through that light.
Right.
Yeah, but they could come out on school road, too.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have to come down to First all the time.
Yeah, but I think it's good to, it's probably good for the school guys tomorrow, so. Anything else?
Colby, could I add one thing real quick? I know there's always been an issue with traffic through the park, people speeding, even last year. Is there any way that we can take advantage of this and put up maybe some additional signs through the park to get the people to slow down with all the kids, you know, playing ball and that?
I might talk, I could talk to Mary if we can get some stuff out there. Yes, I've also had talks with the police chief, especially seeing that additional traffic flow coming through there during, with the construction season. There will be special attention being paid in that area with our police department as much as possible as well, to enforce the speed limit rules as well, so...
I didn't know if IDOT was, I know that's not part of their property, but what, you said you were meeting with IDOT this week, I mean, maybe you should suggest in putting their signs up or something.
Yeah, they might have something themselves if you have to get down there, but I know, see, I've been going through their fight, but they were there. I kind of tend as a captain down there, whether it's one of our cops or county cap or somebody, somebody's been observing the traffic, you know, I'm sure, you know, they can't keep their speed down.
Okay.
But as far as the work going, they, they're repairing the east bridge, the bump, and then this morning they were actually on the west end of it, actually doing work on the bridge, but, and then as far as 102, the curved sidewalk, the ADA ramps are all done on the west side, and now they are, they're all working on the east side, you know, they can take care of it, what actually start the paving and all the actual roadway improvements, so... Like I said, the rest of the stuff of pretty much everything is the same since last month, I have a very thing on high-speed rail and our four city projects are still having...
That high-speed rail looks dead outside of Wilmington right now. Dead? Is it the one, oh no, that's the other line, right? They're talking about putting, what are they doing between Bravewood and Wilmington, U.P.?
That's their, that's the side rail.
The side rail?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they seem to have abandoned everything.
I want to put a whole line.
Still waiting for us, I think, on our design yet.
All right.
Thank you, Colby, thank you.
City administrator, report, Mr. Graff.
Yeah, we're still waiting for the high-speed rail IDOT to do a public forum. They thought they're gonna have some updated designs for us by the end of this month, we're running behind, so I think we're gonna end up having a forum sometime, probably first week of June. It sounds like whenever they have their designs, where they feel comfortable showing the public what K Key Street's gonna look like, staying open, about what the elevation and how it's impacted a couple of those businesses there, so. So we won't have anything from another thirty days here, we need it longer, so we're working everyone. They're trying their best to make it, old businesses not to be impacted with their rights, see what they do, along with what the fire department, so they can still get access to get out of there and things, so. They've slowed down on their expedience, they need something down by May 1st, so we'll see what that means. The CDC supply the buildings for our new Richmond, everything's going well out there, they're, should be, might have vertical today. I know they're supposed to be bringing some vertical walls in, but, the groundbreaking's gonna be May 27th for the company, and then we'll get more flyer out for that, so when the company come out and do the official groundbreaking for that project, so. And everything's going well, I'm meeting with the Michelin third-party logistics company on Thursday, they have an office here. They're gonna get ready maybe to open an office on permanent hours, probably in about three weeks, but anybody's asking about resumes. They can drop their resumes off here every Thursday, they made a deal with the workforce trailer for them to accept them, and then they will forward it to their human resource person, so. The business, the citizens are asking about Michelin, they do want resumes before they'll even go any further, it's just their policy, so. And workforce development says they'll help anyone develop a resume, they have computers right in there, so someone needs to develop one, and they want to get it to the, to Michelin, they'd be glad to do that, so. And they were, were staying on schedule there at the Michelin, and they remain still looking at September to October when they'll have their first building, when they'll start writing hires.
It's supposed to be four and sell, sell two this week.
Yeah, you know.
This week, so.
Four and a... About bedroom. We're waiting for the contracts to get, filing negotiations on the contracts, they now bids in, and they're working with their contracts now, we're told. Talking about mid-May, do the, start getting, maybe come in and get the permit from a city engineer, and then, with Tesla now the building permits, you know, for the buildings themselves, so. Well, St. Petro's goal is to come in and check some table for building permits, and then we'll, then we'll get started. It sounds all positive, they're, they're ready to go, so, we'll, we'll keep it on that. So I, everything else is sort of on hold with the IDOT, so we have projects, so we...
Attorney in court, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you. Since the last meeting, I met with Darren Fowler, Gary Van Dyne, and Colby in regards to reviewing a proposed FOG ordinance. And I think I may have mentioned before what a FOG ordinance is, but FOG is an acronym which stands for fat, oil, and grease. So we reviewed it, and hopefully we'll have proposed ordinance to the city sometime in the near future. The ordinance is meant to help or to give the city additional methods to enforce and take compliance with individuals that may be putting fat, oil, and grease in the city's sanitary sewer system. The proposed ordinance also takes advantage of the State Illinois Environmental Protection Act, because that act gives the owner of a sanitary sewer system the ability to require certain individuals to do certain acts to ensure compliance. Act, because that act gives owner of a sanitary sewer system the ability to require certain individuals to do certain acts to ensure compliance with the law. So we're looking at bringing that to the city council in the near future. I also have two cases pending in certain court, and one case is involving a property on Baltimore Street where there's only a small portion of the porch that's in existence, and there's a garage on the property with holes in it. So first week in May, I have a motion up before the court to get a default judgment against the owner of the property because they failed to file an answer. So the default judgment requests the court allow the city to demolish the property and also to seek personal judgment against the individual that owns the property so that the city can collect against that person for the city's cost of demolishing the property and also that we have a lien on the property. In regards to the old Marathon station, I was working with the Attorney General's Office, and they also have a case against one of the property, and I anticipate working with the Attorney General's Office in regards to the case the city has, you know, in conjunction with what the Attorney General's Office is going to travel to. So that's the extent of my report.
John, with the relation to the Marathon station, if they can't locate the owner, then what's your see their next step if they're unable to locate?
Well, I know they're going to attempt to locate him, and they have...they may have to show to the court that they've taken our single stuff that they can or locate him, and they may have to publish in the newspaper concerning that. And then their final step would be to make determination if they want to expend state funds to remediate the site. I believe they made a determination that they have to remove the underground tanks.
Yes.
So that is, you know, within the discretion of the Attorney General's Office, what they want to do with the property. So if they can't locate the owner, then that may be the route that they take to attempt to use state funding and eventually collect from individual or perhaps from the sale of property. But they've got a large judgment against the corporation that...
$200,000.
Right. They've got a $200,000 judgment against a complete owner of the property, an individual, and I think they have an even larger judgment against the corporation. I think it might have been $500,000 or $600,000 against the corporation, so they've got a large judgment on that, so.
And True North actually did some investigative work for us and found out this case has been pending for many years, and we've wanted to their attention, the nuisance that we filed. So that's what's really gotten the Attorney General's attention, to really assist with this type of project and then tease before. We'll probably be requesting a resolution from the city to reinforce the Attorney General's Office to remediate the site. And the second thing we'll do is we'll be willing to start documenting the nuisance problems with the site. So the police department, any calls they get or any problems we have with the site, photographs, you have to give the manuals and anything I get, they're going to want us to record that so we can basically demonstrate to Attorney General's Office this site has turned into a community nuisance, and it's also detrimental to the economic development of the area, which is a commercial area. So we'll have to do some work to sort of motivate the Attorney General to go for that for those funds to remediate the site. The funds are in a trust fund. They have to just make the determination to go after those trust funds, which is the under stored underground storage tank trust fund, which every gasoline in every storage tank pays into that fund. Like, you just can't just go grab that money just for any purpose. So Attorney General, we're going to stand topper with the Attorney General's Office now. Police department being involved, the fire department involved to document the nuisance.
Oh, is this place actually empty? 11?
Oh, it was open a little bit after that.
Yeah. It looks like 2006 is when they, I think, had their first notice of judgment that went out to them. 2007, I think, there was another one. So somewhere around that area, I think, is when the last time there was any activity. It might have been years before that, that was when the activity was basically from the I E P A, so.
In a realistic world, three to six months, ten months?
I think you're more at that six-month when they're going to finally exhaust all their means. Now, if they do locate him, that's going to be a better thing. We do believe he's in the United States, so we'll know right now. You know, he's not been so...
There's a lot...
So if they find him, what happens? Well, right, the Attorney General, I mean, goes to court, and the court...
So it's a longer process.
And but if that's all going on, we're going to want to present our case on the nuisance going on, and that's where we like to resolutions, you know, campaign to get property owners and change encounters as much as we can along with our local representatives, state representative, US, 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 everybody involved.